Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 4:00 PM on this ninth day of March 2021 pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor's executive orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach will be conducted in person for School Board members and certain staff members. However, due to the necessary health mitigation strategies in place, it's impractical and unfeasible for the public to attend this meeting in person. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's the School Board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the regular School Board meeting to begin at 6:00. At 5:30, the School Board will conclude its formal meeting unless the Board votes to continue until 5:45. The informal session will conclude no later than that time in order to allow the School Board and the school administration to prepare for the regular School Board meeting at 6:00 PM. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in School Board chambers are Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Weems, and presently on Zoom is Ms. Manning.
For the record, Ms. Manning is a Zoom participant this evening due to a health matter, and Mrs. Holt has informed me that she's just running a little bit late today. So with that, we'll get to administrative matters and reports. Does anybody have anything to report? All right, I have one short piece of business to bring up, and it has to do with just remote participation and the monitoring moving forward. So this comes out of a recent Governance Committee meeting which did address the recently approved revisions to Bylaw 136. And it's, as a memory refresher, one of the revisions to the Bylaw distinguishes between participation due to health matters and for personal matters. So this pertains specifically to personal matters, and the Bylaw went further to point out that there's a limit of two for School Board meetings, but then also separate thresholds for the various committees you all might serve on. And so we felt that the next prudent step would be to have a formal monitoring system for everybody's benefit, and with Mrs. Lanetti's assistance, there's going to be a forum developed to help in that effort. And that's because the Bylaw was approved at the last February meeting, so March 1st seemed like a reasonable time to establish as a starting point. So are there any questions about that? All right then, thank you. So that leads us to Agenda Item B, Agenda Development Process. And we are pleased to welcome our School Board Clerk as our presenter. I will say that this presentation has a little history to it. It really stems from a conversation Ms. Tonyato and I had months back when I was still a relatively new chair and had a greater appreciation for the multi-step process involved with agenda planning, and we both agreed it would be beneficial to, at some point, you know, just have a short discussion with all of you on that process. So with that, I am happy to turn it over to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. Again, for the viewing public, my name is Regina Tonyato, Clerk of the Board, and this afternoon I'll be presenting a brief overview of the Agenda Development Process. So Agenda topics come from various sources. One source is the quarterly forecast, and items from the quarterly forecast come in part from the annual School Board Retreat held each summer. Another source is from previous School Board agendas. These are items that are presented each year, for example, various resolutions, the organizational meeting, and legislative matters. Also, please note that items presented as information at a School Board meeting are then placed on the following meeting agenda as either a consent item or an action item. So the pre-draft agenda is prepared on Friday, which is 18 days before a School Board meeting. The Agenda topics again come from those guiding documents. The pre-draft agenda is sent to the Superintendent, Chief of Staff, and the senior staff for discussion and review at the Monday Senior Staff Meeting. The draft agenda is prepared on Monday, which is 15 days before a scheduled Board meeting. The draft agenda is set in the afternoon to the School Board members for review prior to the Agenda planning. Any comments or suggestions from the School Board members are sent to the School Board Chair and/or School Board Vice Chair. As a point of reference, the March 23 draft agenda was emailed to the School Board members yesterday for review. So the next step is Agenda planning. Agenda planning takes place after a School Board meeting. The tentative agenda is developed from the outcome of that Agenda planning meeting, which usually is prepared on Wednesday or after the Agenda planning has taken place, and this is usually 13 days before a School Board meeting. The tentative agenda is sent to the senior staff and their associates along with the School Board, who is also copied on that communication. Just as an aside, changes to the tentative agenda need to be approved by the Superintendent, and then the School Board Clerk sends that request to the Chair and Vice Chair to notify them of the request. Changes can be made to the tentative agenda until it is posted as the final agenda. The final agenda is prepared on Wednesday, six days before Board meeting. The final agenda is posted to the website in the late afternoon, and this agenda is normally two pages long. The Agenda Packet is prepared on Thursday, five days before the Board meeting. The Packet includes the Agenda Item cover sheets with any backup and supporting documentation. The School Board and the public have access to the Agenda Packet at the same time. So here is a visual flow chart of the life cycle of an agenda. And just to recap, it first begins as a pre-draft agenda, then draft, tentative, and then the final agenda, and the Agenda Packet is created from that final agenda. And Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. I will take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Colleagues? Mrs. Anderson?
Just one, could you reiterate, when is the last time you can make changes?
The last time changes can be made is the Wednesday before it gets posted to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That leads us to Item C, SRO Program Update as in School Resource Officers. And we have Mr. Freeman. Welcome.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. In the City of Virginia Beach, we have a strong history and partnership between Virginia Beach City Public Schools and Virginia Beach Police Department, which includes School Resource Officers, the uniformed police officers that are selected and assigned specifically to work in schools. That partnership has remained strong over time, and in recent years, we've continued to strengthen that partnership and implement improvements as needed. Events of last spring and the national conversation that followed compelled us all to reflect and to have good, needed, and sometimes uncomfortable conversations. We know that conversations aren't enough, and we intend to learn and grow as a division and take the steps that continue to move us in the right direction, steps that reflect our values. It was also another opportunity to evaluate how we do things in Virginia Beach, again in the context of a national conversation, and to look for further opportunities to improve so we again evaluated our School Resource Officer program. Part of any quality analysis of a program is to have the right leaders at the table. In addition to leadership from Virginia Beach Police Department, Department of School Leadership, Department of Teaching and Learning, the Department of Communications and Community Engagement, and the Office of Safe Schools, Dr. Lakeesh Parrot was able to help shape improvements with her perspective as the Director of Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Mr. DiMartini is now going to share with you some details about our SRO program and the current updates that we are implementing. Mr. DiMartini?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Good afternoon, School Board members, Dr. Spence and staff. I wanted to take this opportunity to update you on our School Resource Officer or SRO program and the progress we continue to make with our Virginia Beach Police Department partners. The SRO program is near and dear to my heart. I served as an SRO at First Colonial High School from 1997 to 2003, and later as a supervisor of the 4th Precinct SROs. As such, I have seen the impact and the positive effect our police officers have in our communities, especially our students. Students to this day approach and recognize me as having been their SRO even after numerous years have gone by. The SRO program has been in existence for 26 years. The first SRO began in 1994. As the Director of Safe Schools, one of my main objectives is and continues to be to improve upon our relationship with our Police Department. We continue to evaluate, assess, and communicate with all SRO program stakeholders, as well as seek input from the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Dr. Parrot's team to facilitate necessary change with respect to our community and particularly our VBCPs needs. We have 29 full-time assigned School Resource Officers, one at each of our high schools, 15 at our middle schools, and three at Renaissance Academy. Each officer is geographically designated to elementary schools as a liaison to serve as their points of contact. They are encouraged to periodically stop in at their assigned elementary school to provide for a visible presence and discuss any safety concerns that may be pressing. Each elementary principal is familiar with their liaison, and they share cellphone numbers for easy communication. SROs are in uniform and drive marked police vehicles to our campuses daily. SROs serve as mentors, seeking to build relationships with students at a level rarely afforded to most police officers. Day-to-day interaction helps to build relationships and trust, improving how our youth view police officers and authority in general. There are countless examples of the positive impact these officers have had on the youths in our community. I remember walking the halls after Columbine and 9/11, feeling a huge burden of responsibility that every member of that school was looking at me for guidance and comfort during and after those very difficult times. I know the officers today experience the same feelings after incidents across the nation occur, and they seem to be happening more and more frequently. SROs are expected to be mentors, leaders, and role models. Most of the time, they're the only law enforcement representative in the building, and all eyes are on them. They are expected to lead by example and to set the highest of standards of professionalism. All SROs teach classes. They are certified DCJS instructors and teach a state-mandated curriculum titled Virginia Rules. Most SROs have developed other classes they instruct, and often teachers request the officers as guest speakers. They cover various topics of instruction, including, but not limited to, Fourth Amendment rights, the justice system, drugs and e-cigarettes, Safety Patrol, the impact of technology and misuse of social media, oceanfront rules, laws, regulations. The Police Department has a stringent selection process designed to vet officers when an SRO position becomes vacant. This process ensures that highly qualified candidates are selected to staff our schools. The number-one priority of the School Resource Officer is to help facilitate a safe and secure educational environment. They are expected to be on campus before the students arrive and just after they depart for the day. They monitor our hallways to include cafeterias and common areas and are attentive to any concerns that might be expressed by the staff. They often survey the campus and check on doors and camera systems to evaluate the overall safety of the building. Having a uniformed police officer on campus deters deviant behavior and even criminal activity in several ways. Another priority of the SRO is to build relationships, not only with our students, but with our staff and our community. They are each an ambassador to the school they are assigned to and will have many contacts and school-related interactions. They are a criminal law information resource and utilize in this capacity frequently. It is understood that trust is earned. SROs seek to establish trust in their day-to-day duties and responsibilities. SROs understand that enforcing the law while remaining fair, firm, and friendly is vital, but equally as important is the ability to adapt this to students and staff within an educational environment. Their partnership with our school administration also has a huge impact in the development of trust. This relationship is monitored by the Office of Safe Schools as communication is key regarding feedback that might need to be funneled either toward the PD or school administration in the interest of positive change. They are instrumental in the planning stages and development of yearly emergency response plans. They are familiar with the school staff, as well as the logistical layout of the building, its ingress and egress, its camera locations, its drop-off and dismissal patterns, as well as local traffic concerns. Police presence allows for the most immediate possible response to an emergency. The officer and their vehicle also serve as a visible deterrent. SROs provide for an on-campus immediate resource for our administrative team regarding any criminal activity reported in the building. The Virginia Beach Police Department is committed to diverting juveniles away from the criminal justice system whenever possible. The VBPD and the VBCPs both recognize the importance and mutual benefit of keeping our students in the classroom. This commitment to this diversion initiative is outlined in the Virginia Beach Police Department's Interactions with Juvenile's Field Guide and the MOU. It's important to point out, SROs are primary law enforcement authority on campus, but SROs do not participate in the school disciplinary process, but do conduct criminal investigations when necessary. Both could be occurring simultaneously, and understanding the difference between administrative and criminal matters is critical. Recently, the State Legislature mandated a basic SRO certification course. We have been ahead of this for quite some time, as the VBPD and the VBCPs has required this of our SROs for numerous years. We are glad the State saw a need to mandate this training. The SRO program is supported by the VBPD's Community Engagement Office. They have a sergeant who coordinates the annual training of the SROs. The Department requires the officers to attend classroom instruction as well as practical exercises. The exercises consist of responding to various school-based emergencies and scenario-based training to include active assailants. Officers often seek out other training as well, locally, regionally, nationally specific to School Resource Officers. The Police Department encourages the enhancement of institutional knowledge with an emphasis on schools and how we can keep our students in them. This includes many classes and certifications provided by the Department of Criminal Justice Services available that are not existing requirements of a Virginia Beach Police Officer. Yearly in-service training is given to all SROs every August and covers a variety of topics specific to their roles and responsibilities. Just to note a few legal updates from our Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the Police Department Special Investigation Unit gives them briefs on gangs, drugs, and computer crimes. They receive guidance on the best way to handle and investigate social media threats. The Virginia Beach City Public Schools OPEX representative discussed our SPED program, and the Memorandum of Understanding is reviewed. Recently, the Virginia Beach Police Department added new curriculum to the already robust training requirements of an SRO. Policing the Teen Brain is a two-day class which discusses adolescent development, communication strategies, interventions and consequences, community factors. SROs also are required to be Crisis Intervention Team certified, also known as CIT. This five-day class covers recognizing and responding to persons in crisis, communication and de-escalation strategies. It's important to note, a great emphasis is placed on de-escalation strategies during Police Department training. A combination of mandated CIT, use of force, legal, policies and procedures, scenario-based training, and more ensure that all officers utilize problem identification and verbal de-escalation skills before any other options are considered. As previously discussed, Virginia Rules is a state-mandated class all SROs instruct. The program is specific to both the middle and high school student. The purpose and intent of the course focuses on Virginia laws and assists the adolescent to better understand how to make good decisions, avoid breaking the law, and become active citizens in school and in their communities. Given the social unrest events of last summer, the Office of Safe Schools sought feedback for the first time ever from all secondary principals regarding SROs assigned to their respective schools. Seeking honest feedback, we assured the principals' names would not be disclosed, as responses would be processed and used to facilitate communication in the interest of enhancing the program. We asked them questions such as, "Does your SRO foster a positive working relationship? Does your SRO effectively communicate? Do you feel that your SRO is adequately visible? Do you feel your SRO is meeting your expectations?" The overwhelming response was not just positive, it was powerful. Listed as just a few of the hundred of positive responses we received, I particularly liked, "Please do not move our SRO." As always, we are still guided by our blue-ribbon panels, analysis, and their resulting recommendations regarding best practices in overall security. The Office of Safe Schools is consistently striving to improve upon these eight safety and security-specific recommendations. However, we believe the SRO program and its impact on our division is at least equally as important. While the work of an SRO is difficult to quantify, it is obvious that the students and staff that we have communicated with believe that having these officers is necessary and impactful. So, a few collaborative activities, accomplishments, and thoughts on the future. The Virginia Beach Police Department, led by Deputy Chief Dean and the Office of Safe Schools, updated our Memorandum of Understanding. We collaborated with Dr. Parrot's Equity Council and the legal team led by Cami Lanetti, and we are proud of the new document. Changes were implemented that should assist principals and officers to understand better how to navigate a wide variety of situations that may require action by both. This would include a clear understanding of the importance of differentiating school matters from criminal process and roles and responsibilities. The new document should be signed and implemented within the next few weeks. Principal Krista Barton and her team from Parkway Elementary School recently organized a neighborhood walk up Twin Canal in an effort to reach out to her students that have been affected by gun violence within the neighborhood. Many folks came out to support Mrs. Barton's efforts to include the Superintendent, School Board members, Councilman Rouse, and others. I thought what spoke volumes was the presence of almost all SROs, many of them on their day off. Mrs. Allen's team from the Office of Community Engagement organized a meet-and-greet Zoom call this past fall in order to provide our community the opportunity to see and speak to their SROs. The Office of Safe Schools recently rewrote and created a new Emergency Procedure Guide. These guides are in every classroom. Our staff relies on the manual to assist them in drills and emergency procedures. We recognize these guides as an essential document for our teachers during our school safety audits conducted prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. To be thorough and inclusive, we sought information and guidance from selected SROs, as well as our partners in fire and EMS. We, the Office of Safe Schools, look forward to playing a more active role in the selection of School Resource Officers. We expect to participate in the future processes. Leading forward, we will continue to assess VBCPs emergency preparedness and our ability to respond to crisis, considering the vital role that our SRO program plays during a critical incident. We will seek out new strategies to enhance the ways that we and the VBPD work together to make sure that our schools and our communities are safer. Next, we have a short video from 2019. I think you will see from the video, these SROs are more than just a cop in a school.
At 5:00, a Virginia Beach man is hanging up his hat after making a huge impact on students at Green Run High School. Ally Wetherston has a story you'll see all late on 13 News Now.
Are y'all ready to walk?
He goes by the name Officer Crumpton.
Time to time, y'all, I go time to time.
Sadly, this is his last day here at Green Run High School. After seven years of being a School Resource Officer, he's forced to turn in his uniform due to a city ordinance.
When you turn 65, which I turned on August 8, our policy is that you have to retire. If I could have stayed, I would have stayed until at least the end of the school year.
But he couldn't, so today, surrounded by his stallion family, they made sure he went out in style.
There's a lot of great people out here, no matter reputation, but it's nothing like that.
Even on his last day, he's working hard.
Love you guys, love you.
Getting kids home for the holidays and giving his final goodbye hugs.
I'm gonna be back to see y'all, trust me, y'all see me around, okay?
As Officer Crumpton.
The first thing you're gonna ask is, "Are you gonna come to my graduation?" Of course I'm gonna be at the graduation, plus I'm gonna be at the prom.
Thank you.
I asked her, "I'd come back and do politics." She said, "Of course." So I've already filled out my application, submitted it, and I hope that'll surprise the kids. That's where I want to be, I want to be here. There's no rest I want to go.
Yes, sir, I'm in Miss Green Run.
In Virginia Beach, Ally Wetherston.
My last day as the guardian of Green Run High School.
13 News Now.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll take any questions.
Yes, sir. And beginning with Mrs. Anderson.
That video made me tear up. But my question is, do you think we have a need for more SROs so that there can be more presence in our elementary schools? Because I know we're covering the secondary schools very well, and I know that their job is to also, you know, partake in the closer elementary schools.
Right, so as many of you know, because we shared what our status was in our schools and the posture of our security in our schools, we're constantly reviewing that. We are in a good position right now with the SROs that we have and the way that we have assigned, and with everything that we do, it will be a constant evaluation as we go through it. So just realize that SROs aren't the only security measure that we have in our schools. We have a layered security effort, of which SROs are a part.
I just thought maybe that it might develop a better relationship, starting in the elementary schools, to see more presence at that, you know... starting in the elementary schools to see more presence at that, you know. You develop that along the years, and I know that our SROs do visit the elementary schools, I get that. But I just wondered if we had a few more, you know, maybe we.
So one of the, just a reminder too, it's worth circling back to, was when we went through the Blue Ribbon Panel project, we had that conversation and we talked with the Police Department, talked with our principals and community about that very question. And was determined then that that was not going to be a good use of that resource. Because a lot of it is focused on community policing, and that really isn't important or necessary at the elementary level as much as it is at the secondary level. So from that perspective, no. To your point of, is there value in having officers visit our elementary schools and build those relationships? Absolutely, and I think some of the teaching that occurs that was described does occur in the elementary schools as well, so.
Yes, and there's a balance for the Police Department of their resources as well.
Absolutely, and I know that they're short actually, police officers, right now anyway, so. I could see where, that they may not be able to staff that. But I do know that there was recent legislation passed that retired police officers and retired sheriffs are allowed to work in the schools now, so.
Right, and so that's been something we've been supportive of for a while, since Mr. DeMartini and I got here, because to be able to, the way that the system was designed is it wasn't really set up well to be able to do that. And that new legislation really helped support that effort for those that transitioned from the Police Department to be able to then come in and be an employee for Virginia Beach City Public Schools.
There's still more work to be done with legislation.
Okay. Thank you.
And so just while I remember this, so Captain Wilkinson came in and joined us, and I'd like to acknowledge his presence here and appreciate him coming by and being here with us tonight. Thank you.
Welcome, Captain. So any of you can feel free to, do you have anything you wish to share with us?
Well, I would just add that the.
Please come up to.
Very proud of the SRO program, obviously. It's something ingrained in our organization. We wish we had the staffing to enhance the program, to include more of the elementary school exposure. The reality is that we're significantly understaffed at the moment. But in the future, maybe if we can ever get up to full strength, that's a possibility. But, you know, the elementary school certainly vital to the SRO program when they're able to get out into the school and the kids love to see them. I just add that what you saw with Officer Crumpton, that's not the exception. That is the rule with the SROs. They love being in the schools, they love the kids, and it's the job they chose to have. None of our SROs are required to be SROs. They've chosen that career path and they exceed at that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Melnick, and then Mrs. Owens.
So I think, for me, the greatest part of that presentation was all the training that the officers receive. And the affirmation that this is not a desk, it's not a punishment job, that officers are actually choosing to be in our schools, that's really important to me because relationships matter. But the most difficult part was watching Officer Crumpton have to leave in the middle of a school year. And so when you talk about relationships matter, and then here's a guy who has to leave before the end of the year, that's really, really difficult. Obviously, the kids loved him and they trusted him and adored him, and he was finding a way to come back after he retired. But to not allow him to finish out that school year, that was the hardest part. I mean, Mrs. Anderson, by her own admission, was bawling her eyes out over here, so. It is good to see that, and that's what our community needs to see. And they need to feel that and understand that. And so I hope this message is shouted from the mountaintops to our community that the officers love the schools and want to be there.
Thank you, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to point out Officer Crumpton's situation was unique. He was 65 years old and he aged out.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I hate that he aged out in the middle of a school year. I wish he could've finished the school year, and that's the saddest part.
They did prep, they prepped the community and the building for that day. They knew that was coming for a long way, and they had a replacement who was at Green Run several weeks in advance. So it was a smooth transition.
I don't know if I'd want to be Officer Crumpton's replacement because those look like big shoes to fill, but I'm sure that our new officer is doing great. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I wanted to, I do have a question, but I wanted to take a couple seconds and just acknowledge the work that I've seen with the SRO program and the community engagement this past year or so. I was very impressed with the community engagement in the Twin Canal Village neighborhood. I went and I accompanied Dr. Spence and everybody else who was there. And I think it was really important, and I hope it's something that we'll continue to expand upon with that neighborhood and maybe with a couple others, to have it be something that happens maybe quarterly or twice a year and not just once during a tragic situation. But as a parent who lived in Twin Canal Village with my son, I applaud that effort. I wish it had been there sooner, but I am so happy to see that we're making that progress right now. So I just wanted to throw that out. Also, I really appreciate that we're having these conversations and taking a look at whether there are issues that we may need to address or things that we might need to present differently to build those relationships with the community. I think that's important, that we're able to do that on a continued basis. When people see things in the national news, the conversation certainly trickles down, and I think it's important to be able to distinguish the similarities and differences in what we're seeing in national media and what we have going on in our specific city and with our specific school system. I am very familiar with the CIT training. I've participated in parts of it, I've taught parts of it in the past. And I know that our SROs and our CIT members in general from the Police Department are getting a high level of needed training, and that that's a positive thing. The only question that I have is in regards to the MOU. Is that somewhere that's available online for the public to also be able to view? Or how would people be able to see and have an understanding of our MOU?
Yes, and before I mentioned that MOU, the kind of a theme that you just talked about was communication. And that was one of the things that we talked about a lot during the course of the summer and moving forward, is how are we communicating? Because we find that there's a misunderstanding of how SROs fit into our plan. So the communication piece is big, in addition to the relationship that you talked about. So moving forward, that's something that we're interested in doing, is layering communication regularly so that people can understand what the SROs do and continue to build trust, because a lot of people, that perception that Officer Crumpton had, they probably didn't have that perception, and help them with the communication that way. So from the MOU standpoint, yes, it is. We are in the final stages of concluding the update to the MOU. The current MOU, is that available visibly online?
The current one that exists from 2008, I don't know if it's online or not.
We're gonna verify that. The intention is, is that it's hung on the website and it's prominent and available for everybody to see. And the updated one will be there, and if the current one is not on there, we'll make sure that it gets prominently displayed.
Excellent, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Chair Ryan. I'd just like to say that looking at Officer Crumpton sort of drug in my heart as well. I've met him several times, and just as Stu's asking that you saw him in the video, that's all he was about the job and his students. He said, "Oh, she was something that I could do to stay on." And we talked, had long conversations, but he was always there. I'm just making a statement on him. And whatever event that we had, when it was early in the morning, he was there, especially for the African-American milk, some of those Biscuit Rocks, he was there participating wholeheartedly. And Ms. Melnick and Ms. Owens had hit on several things about training and community engagement. I'd just like to make another statement too about the MOU that you're having. Just reflecting back on a meeting that we had with several students from several schools, we met at Moca with Deputy Chief Dean, Ms. Riggs and I, and we were there talking with the students. And it really feels good to know that those initiatives that the students talked about that we're working on and Deputy Chief Dean talked about is getting our new MOU together again, making that more identifiable with this now generation. I do appreciate you all moving on that and making that happen. Thank you too for working with the Civicallys, Twin Canal, C-TAC, all those areas. You work really well with those, and I get the information from them when I visit with the Civicallys and the works that you're doing, especially going on into the neighborhood. Because what happened in the community, we have to realize that it spills over into the schools sometimes. And that was one of my concerns, and I'm glad that we are moving forward on that as well. I'd like to know, how was the meet your SRO on a Zoom call? How was that and how was it received? And who was, you know, just a little bit on that?
This was done back in September. The idea was for, to give the community the opportunity to see who their SRO was and to talk to him or her, and, you know, it was positive. A lot of parents signed on and asked questions and things like that, so. And it was, there were 37 different ones, so they all did them individually. It wasn't one big group of all the SROs in one Zoom call. It was all individual, specific to the school. It was good.
I'd just like to just to say, I do appreciate, I am excited about what the new plans that we have here for the SROs, because the students spoke to their concerns and their initiatives and what they wanted to see in a SRO. And it looked like we are moving in that direction. Thank you so much for hearing them and hearing their voices and moving towards that initiative. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. So we have Mrs. Riggs and then Mrs. Franklin.
Well, first I want to say thank you, and thank you for coming out here and taking all the time that you guys do to educate the public about what the SRO program is, because like we have seen and realized, there's so many misconceptions on that job that they do. But I've been around a long time, as everybody knows, and my last 19 years of teaching was in the middle school. And we had SROs in the middle school. And as far back as then, and I retired in 2012, so there you can, you know, it was four years even before past that, so it's been a long time that I was in the middle school with SROs. They had relationships that were so positive with those kids. Matter of fact, even one of the SROs, it was at Loxbury Middle School, so we have some great ones there, and I don't think there's any one that's not great, because like you said, they're trained for this and they asked to do this. He even had an after-school club about becoming a policeman. So he did an after-school club with the kids. There was a lot of interaction back then, and it has been as long as I've been around and known about the SRO, you know, program, and we've had it. So I really appreciate that. And I did want to mention the thing that, the meeting that we had with Officer Dean and the students and their parents, and the particular student that we, you know, we developed this for, her to ask for this at Moca, was the student that wanted to do the march that, from Bayside High School. He and his brother and his mother were, and several of his friends were there. So it was a roundtable discussion. It was really a very good discussion, because they needed to see and be able to ask questions about what does an SRO do? And now to see the things that they asked and want to see are being developed and even more, you know, put more attention to is a really good thing. So I just, I think you guys make yourself very available to our community and have done a good job. And I just, I think, you know, you did mention one of the things that we are a, we were top in Virginia, one of the trainings Virginia Beach is, but I think we're top in the nation. We would be a good example for SROs, for people to see just, I'd love to see something like this from Virginia Beach be nationally televised, just to show they could, so the public can see, citizens can see across the nation, just how good this program can be and how positive it can be as well. Not the negatives that we always see, and of course, we know what the news sells. But what they need to see is the positive things, and I think Virginia Beach is certainly a leader. I've seen it for many years with the SRO program, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riggs, and Mrs. Franklin, and then Mrs. Manning.
Well, Captain, and everyone here that is bringing the presentation, thank you so much. I just want to thank you for your service. It's such an honorable career path, and I just really appreciate everything you do to help partner with the community and everything you do on a day-to-day basis. I did have a question speaking to Ms. Riggs's comments. Do we have, because I would think that with the SROs in the schools and building these positive relationships, there would be an interest then, after getting to know them, to pursue a career in the police force. Do we have any kind of program that creates a pathway or some kind of ability to, you know, provide some internships, anything like that?
So interesting themes, a lot of the things that we're talking about tonight are exactly the themes that we went through. So I'm not in the position to be able to share with you kind of what thoughts are and where we're progressing, but that is an item of discussion.
Okay, because I think that is a great opportunity, especially when we're shorthanded in the police force already, to create an opportunity for maybe kids who don't know what they want to do post-high school. And they've built these great relationships, and I think that'd be wonderful to just have them be able to easily transition.
Looks like the captain has something to add?
The Police Department has the Youth Academy, Youth Police Academy, and the SROs are encouraged to promote that academy throughout the building.
Yeah, exactly what I was gonna say. We have a youth academy that is open to students. We also have Explorer Program that's open to students. It's kind of a more long-term exposure to law enforcement career. And we're on the verge of a cadet program that we're looking for funding, we're looking to develop that in the future, and that's more towards a slightly older youth crowd, but someone who's really serious about getting into the law enforcement profession. So there's at least three avenues, and then there's always the personal relationships that are bonded with the SRO, that they serve as mentors while students reach the age of 21 and have the ability to apply to a law enforcement job in Virginia Beach. And they build these long-term relationships. So I can't speak to the exact number of how many times that's occurred, but I would imagine that it's occurred over the years for sure.
And how would they, where would somebody go to find out information about the mentorship programs and stuff?
They could certainly go to the Virginia Beach Police website, and all of that information is there. And they can certainly go to their SRO in the school, and the SRO should have all of that information.
And I assume that they're there on Career Day and, you know, talking to the kids and stuff.
They are, absolutely.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank our Virginia Beach Police Department and all the SROs that serve our schools. They put their lives on the line to protect our students, and we're so thankful for what they do. I've had the ability to speak to two parents from Parkland who actually lost their children, a son and a daughter, in that shooting. And they are big advocates for making sure that we do have armed police officers in every school. And Ms. Anderson brought this up earlier. Obviously, we don't currently have them in our elementary schools. If we budgeted for that, would we even have the ability to get the manpower? I think it was mentioned before that our police are not fully staffed. I understand that's probably a problem nationwide. But that's my question, if we did even budget for it, would we have that ability?
I think I'm pretty secure in saying that even if the school board budgeted it and funded it, at this point, the Police Department does not have the ability to fill those positions.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Mrs. Manning?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mrs. Melnick.
My question is for administration. You said the original MOU is from 2008, and you're not sure that it's prominently displayed on our website. But if you're nearing the completion of our new MOU, I'd hate to see that. But if you're nearing the completion of our new MOU, I'd hate to see that put on our website now, the MOU from two thousand and eight, if there are some changes that are going to occur. I don't want there to be some confusion between the two.
Let me clarify, there have been changes in the law that do require that the new MOU be out for public comment, so it will have to go out on there for that, to do that, and then it'll be firmly played, it'll be on your state schools page on the website. But the new law does require that the public have an opportunity.
Oh, no, I want I want the public to be able to view it and 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 to comment on it, but I don't want the old one put up and people think that that's the one we're talking about. If it's not on there now, I I'm hoping that we can just move forward with the new one. I don't want, I just didn't want there to be any confusion.
Yeah, much of what was in the prior one is incorporated into the new one, so the same things that's in there. There are certain requirements that now have to be in there, so it does look significantly different than the last one did.
Okay, as long as no one's confused.
All right, that that seems we're all good colleagues. Thank you all, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
So Workshop Item D, twenty twenty twenty-one, Plan Updates. Welcome, Dr. Bergen, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, Chair Wynn-Ry, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the Board, Dr. Spence. It is my privilege to be here again with you this evening, along with Dr. Robertson, to share several updates for you on our ongoing efforts to support our students and staff. This is an overview of the topics that we'll be covering this evening. I'm going to begin the workshop, as I typically do, with a quick review of the trend for percent positivity for the eastern region over the past several months. And Dr. Robertson will then follow me to provide a number of updates, including an update on the return of Option One secondary students, some clarification about our attendance expectations for our Option One students, and an update on the resumption of extracurricular activities at the secondary level. And then we will open the floor up to your questions. So this is a bit of good news on this graph. As you will see, as the graph indicates, we have had a steady decline of percent positivity in the eastern region over the past several months. After reaching an all-time high of twenty-one point five percent in early January, around the eighth, since that time, the percent positivity has declined by one or two percentage points each week and currently stands at nine point two percent. So I'd now like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Robertson, so that he can provide an update on the return of secondary students, Option One.
Hi, Robertson. So, thank you, Dr. Bergen. As we enter the third week of the return of our Option One grade seven through twelve students, as noted on this slide, I can share that both students and staff are making adjustments and finding their way. Students are attending the ATC Tech Center, as well as the Environmental Program at the Brock Center, according to their schedules. Our scheduling model at the secondary level has the majority of teachers in the concurrent environment once again. They are earning a stipend for the additional work required to plan for both in-person and virtual students, as they did in the first term. Over the past couple of weeks, schools have made minor adjustments to lunch and breakfast procedures, transitions, PE and recess schedules, and arrival dismissal based on staff input, feedback from the safety audit teams, and administrative observations as part of their commitment to continuous improvement. As a result, schools are starting to find their rhythm in providing the best possible experience for students and staff. One of the things we observed in the last couple of weeks was the need to reiterate our attendance procedures with secondary students. We found that many Option One students were choosing to remain home on some of the days when they were slated to be physically present in school. Teachers commented to principals that this was impacting their instructional planning, and they wondered if parents knew their child wasn't coming to school, but instead were participating virtually on a day when they were expected to be present in school. Therefore, last Thursday, we sent a memo to all principals to share with staff, as well as shared in our weekly Thursday communications with parents, that Option One students must be in class on their assigned days, or they will be marked absent, regardless as to whether or not they are participating virtually. This will trigger the automated call and email to parents, letting them know their child was not present in school that day. Parents who were aware and support the absence can send a note into the teacher, and the absence will be excused. Parents that were not aware can then address this with their child. Our primary goal here is to ensure parents are aware when their child is not in school on the days they should be. We also recognize that the school experience has changed, and students no longer have the freedoms they enjoyed prior to COVID, as our health and safety mitigations are very restrictive. Based on this, some students may decide to go back to virtual learning, and we are asking parents of those students to contact the school if they support this request. By doing so, we hope to open up seats to the remaining families who have students on a waitlist. In the end, Option One students need to be present in class on the days they are to report, and this procedure provides clarity on expectations and keeps parents informed. Over the past couple of weeks, schools have been phasing in extracurricular programming and the in-person setting. Like with athletics, there are established health and safety protocols to follow for each of these programs, some more restrictive than others. As I shared last week, not all schools are able to offer the same programming due to factors such as access to students in the class setting, and variables such as students who play a fall or spring sport, and also participate in an arts program like band, chorus, and theater. Please know our schools are committed to providing as many opportunities as possible for students to participate in these programs, as they are vital to the whole school experience. Many of our clubs that have been meeting virtually have now introduced in-person options when practical. And know in any circumstance, when students and staff are gathering in person, they'll be expected to adhere to all of the health and safety mitigations. In the coming weeks, we will make decisions on special events, in-year events like graduation, rink dance, prom, senior day, et cetera, and this will be shared with the Board at the appropriate time. Not noted here, but of interest, is that all of our sixty-six athletic programs for the fall season are underway, and no team has had to pause their season thus far due to COVID cases. We've now played ten football games, and the other sports began their competitions this week. At this time, we're here to answer any questions.
While everybody else, oh, there we go. Okay, Mrs. Hughes.
I apologize, I'm just going to ask. So Dr. Deveries was nice enough to talk to me today about the band, because I had some concerns from band members. And so I just wanted to ask, and she gave me some great explanations for certain questions that I'd asked. But the one thing that I do have a question about is, are the uniforms? So we're getting, I am getting comments from different band folks that they would like to be able to wear their uniforms, and they don't understand, you know, why they can't wear their uniforms when they're at the games and things like that. So.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not aware of that dilemma. I could certainly check. I mean, if if the students are performing, we did have a band perform last weekend, we had a step team perform, a drum line. I would think they would be able to wear their uniforms. I will say that I recall that in inclement weather, they've chosen not to wear their uniforms in the past, but otherwise, last weekend was nice.
From what I understand, they're they're asked to wear their B uniform, which is like a T-shirt right now. So so I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's a way to get some kind of across the board.
Ms. Franklin, I think the question would be, is this something you're you think is large across the district, or is this an individual program, in which case we would direct that back to the school?
Right, that's, well, that's what, I'm not sure if there was a district-wide.
There's not, there's not a district-wide expectation.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. That's all I want.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes.
Thank you, I was having a hard time getting the microphone on. So I've been getting questions from parents. A parent said her child was sick and stayed home and was marked as absent, was told, no, you can't, you can't stay home if you're sick, which seems counterintuitive. I have had parents reach out saying that their children go to the library because the teacher's teaching from home, and that is considered face-to-face for whatever reason. Students who go into the classroom and the teacher tells them to log into Zoom, because they're still doing all of their lessons on Zoom instead of getting actual face-to-face instruction. They're sitting in the classroom, logging in, and the teacher's there, but everything seems to be on Zoom instead of having interaction. I'm getting a lot of, and these are just three examples, none of these seem to be appropriate.
So the first one was about.
If your child is sick and they stay home, they would be counted absent if they participate by Zoom, if their reason is that they're sick and staying home? I mean, wouldn't we encourage that?
No, if a student is Option One, and they're expected to be in school, and they're not in school, they're going to be counted absent. If they're absent because they're homesick, like they would have been in previous years, they'll be marked ill. The parent can send in a note, the absence will be excused. So that's that's appropriate, that if this child's not physically present in school, that they're absent for Option One. And then what was the second one, Ms. Hughes?
Students where the whole class goes and sits in the library, because the teacher is teaching from home. Apparently, their teacher told them that she would come back when the world was safe.
So I would have to direct that one back to the school, because that's absolutely not the norm. We do have some classrooms where the teacher is teaching virtually. I was in a classroom today, teacher's quarantined. The students were in the classroom with a teacher assistant, and the teacher, it's quarantined, she feels well, but she was quarantined, so she was delivering her instruction through Zoom to the classroom students who were present, and there was a teacher assistant in the room. So I have seen that, that is, that is absolutely appropriate. And what was the third one?
The students are shown up in the classroom and the teacher's there, but everything is still being done via Zoom.
Yeah, so I'm imagining it's probably a concurrent situation. And in a concurrent situation, they're delivering their learning through the Schoology Learning Management System platform, which is either on Google Meet or on Zoom, and that is the way that the teacher can absolutely deliver instruction to both the students in the in-person setting and the students in the virtual setting at the same time. And that's also appropriate.
All right, so the last part of it would be, I'm hearing from a lot of people that teachers are not at the school with the students. At this point, have have all of our teachers had an opportunity to get the vaccine if they want it?
I don't know if we have that information, because we don't collect that, yeah, we don't.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Yes, every employee in Virginia Beach City Public Schools has had an opportunity to receive the vaccine. We have about ten thousand out of our fifteen thousand employees who have opted to receive it. The only people that haven't received it is because they haven't asked for it.
But do we know if they're teachers or custodians or anybody else? We don't know that, right?
Well, if they've had the opportunity, that's enough, because you have some people who don't want it, so.
Right.
I mean, that shouldn't be a factor, but.
Yes.
So every Virginia Beach City Public Schools employee who wants to get the vaccine has had an opportunity to get both doses by now?
We, so, when we start to talk about who has received the actual dose and whether they've received dose one or dose two, it becomes challenging to know that. So these are estimates that I'm going to give you. Estimating that about five thousand have received their second dose, and we have about ten thousand in the system. So, and this came up at the last school board meeting. So just recognize that any given time, if I tell you that everybody's in the system, if somebody has signed up between Sunday and now, that wouldn't, somebody can say, well, hey, I haven't been signed up yet. Well, that's because they just indicated their preference and we're getting them going, or we were working on something. So, but the vast majority of those ten thousand have been put into the system and have had the opportunity to sign up to get their their first dose, or second dose if they're, that's where they are.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Weems, and then Dr. Spence, or would you?
Well, I just wanted to, you know, it it sounds like there are some parents or students who may have an experience that's out of their norm, normative experience. And just a reminder for those folks, please contact your school. I mean, those are difficult to solve at the district level. If you've got a teacher who's made a comment you're not happy with, I think you need to call the school, talk with the principal, start with the teacher. If the teacher can't resolve your concerns, talk with the principal, and and then we'll work past there. But just a reminder for our folks in the community, that's really the place to solve that problem. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Weems.
Thank you. So if I'm a student and my mom or dad or caregiver, grandma, whoever I live with, has COVID, and I'm quarantining for what amounts to ten school days, let's say, how am I getting my work for those two weeks? Because obviously, I can't jump into a virtual class, because it's different teachers. Am I getting it just the same way as I am if I was sick or in the hospital daily? Or is it, is it happening the same way and as much and as rigorous and all that?
So it depends, because we do have a large number of students, particularly our secondary level, who are in concurrent classrooms. So those students would zoom right into their classroom as if they were sitting there on a regular basis.
Right, secondary.
They get the exact same information. At elementary level, teachers are providing recordings of either the whole group lesson they've done that day, or they are providing alternative videos to their students, so they can access that information. There's office hours every Monday. There's still the same type of communications that would go forth between the teacher and the student, an email. Elementary uses Seesaw a great deal, which provides an opportunity for for some face-to-face conversations. But we are providing those students with learning materials on a regular basis. And again, the teacher's either recording the lesson they deliver, or they have another approved video recording of material that helps the students access learning that they're making available through the Schoology platform.
Okay, all right. And then with the teacher, so if a teacher is having to quarantine, but feels fine, she or he can teach virtually, and and we're having an assistant in that classroom. Okay, so, is this, do you think this is going to kind of be the norm for future? Because I can just, so after COVID, is is this going to be a kind of a practice? Because I can see maybe if a teacher has to stay home for, maybe her child's sick, but she's feeling fine, are we going to allow this, or is this just a COVID thing? Because we don't have enough substitute teachers.
I don't really think we're there yet to answer that question. I think that's one of those things that we're going to have to wrestle with, sort of what does this look like as we move past the pandemic and start thinking about what's available to us and how we leverage it? And whether or not that's a, we would think about that as a best practice or think about that as not a best practice.
Okay, because I can see good on both sides.
Yeah, I think there's, that's right. I think there might be places where we look at that and go, yeah, we should do that. And then there might be times where you go, that's not appropriate. But we haven't really wrestled with that.
Okay, okay.
And it's definitely not a result of not having substitutes. We feel like the best opportunity for our students is to have the teacher on the other end of the line. And if the teacher's feeling well enough, they're going to do so. But we we have had teachers who were ill, and then a substitute has been secured to be in the classroom.
Right, right.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now, Mondays, I just want to, I want you to explain Mondays again, because we're getting a lot of, and I know we've talked about this many times, it seems like. We all know the reasons that Mondays were set aside about a year ago. So we're getting emails of parents, or I am, of they don't understand why, especially at the elementary level, why Mondays are still the day that the students stay home at the elementary level. And so do we have still teachers at the elementary level that are teaching both virtual and in-person at the same time, or is that just a secondary? So can you just kind of explain for the public? Because we hear on both sides, you got to keep Mondays like that, like it is, and then you hear the next email, why is my child not going to school five days a week, especially at the elementary level? So can we, can?
So we do have teachers at the elementary level who are providing concurrent instruction. It is not the norm.
Okay.
It is the norm at secondary.
Do you know, like, ballpark, figure how many?
Um. Last semester, maybe five hundred across fifty-five schools.
Okay.
So, we do have some. So we do have some. On Monday, there was a decision was made early on based upon some feedback from teachers to utilize time on Mondays for small group instruction. So we heard early on, uh, the legitimate concern of, of too much screen time for our youngest kids. And so the decision was made to shift some of that screen time Tuesday through Friday through the small group lens onto Mondays. So teachers are using Mondays for small groups. They're also having office hours. And of course, professional learning. So again, I don't think we can understate some of the opportunities that our teachers have had over the last several weeks. Two weeks ago, we had roughly nine hundred teachers participate in, seven hundred participated in a two-and-a-half-hour trauma-informed symposium. And so those of you who've been on the board for a long time, none of this is required as part of any twenty-two points because that's gone. These teachers chose to attend this two-and-a-half-hour session on a Monday on trauma-informed practices, which is right in line with our strategic plan. On the same day, we had about a hundred and seventy participate with Dr. Doug Reeves on a session talking, and these were secondary teachers, talking about grading and feedback. Yesterday, we did our second session with Doug Reeves. We had two hundred and sixty-five secondary teachers participate, again, volunteering their hour of time to participate with Doug Reeves. And yesterday's session was on effective feedback and, and discussing the, the con- the thinking behind certain grading practices. That's not even counting all of the professional learning that teaching and learning has been providing. If you recall, it was a common voice that we heard in September that teachers were like, "We weren't, we're not prepared for this." Nobody gave us any training, which we shared, there was training provided all spring and over the summer. But you don't hear that anymore. And you're not hearing it because we've built such capacity within the schools that the capacity within the schools with the Department of Teaching and Learning on how to utilize technology most effectively to, uh, assist with teaching and learning is why you're not hearing that anymore. The other byproduct we've had, and this is a Zoom byproduct, is our professional learning communities have been strengthened. Because it's no longer inconvenient to, to be in a, a PLC group with teachers from other schools. Because you don't have to leave your classroom. Or if it's on Monday and you're at home on Monday, you don't have to leave your home. You can participate in the PLC. We're seeing much more evidence at the school level of teachers working smarter, not harder. And what I mean by that is they're actually working together to create some common assessments, to talk about, um, grading and things like that. Uh, that if it's, it's helping to shorten their timeframe. So we've had a lot of success out of these Mondays.
Okay, right. And I, I agree, a lot of success and a lot of training, but for the parent with an elementary child, their view might be, "My fourth grader is learning fourth grade material in four days a week because that Monday is different. It is different." I've sat there with the fourth grader and it's not the same as being with your teacher, you know. And so, you know, their, their concern is the pacing. You're still trying to learn everything that you're supposed to learn, your elementary child, but you're only having four days to do it. And I think the, um, the question and the fear is this, is this just going to be the standard from now on? It's, you know, and, and it's obviously a good question to ask. I mean, are we, is this going to be standard a four-day instructional in-person week? I don't know. That's something that we'll probably have to wrestle with too.
No, I, I actually don't think that's one we have to, we have to, um, predict. I, I think I said that last time. We don't intend for that to be a standard moving forward. We're using that this year not only for the training purposes, but because there are a lot of still unique challenges even at elementary that continue. So we've got, for example, a lot more students out than we normally have and teachers have to do a lot of extra preparation to your question about how do they get access to materials. Um, we have, um, significant mitigation, as has been talked about a few times even in the elementary, so like, for example, I was in school today. So a lot of students are doing, um, digital instruction while the teachers are working with them in small group instruction and hands-on with manipulative. So they're really still doing kind of two types of teaching even though they're in a face-to-face setting because of the way the mitigations are working. And so that, you know, frankly, the communications that we've had with our principals and our teachers has been that this continues to be a significant challenge. They do leverage Mondays for a lot of planning purposes to be able to deal with the challenges they're facing on the other four days of the week. So we've held the line for now that we think Mondays remain important. That's the feedback we're getting from our teaching staff. That's the feedback we're getting from our principals. And, and I recognize the concern that parents are sharing. Um, and I don't anticipate that this would be a next-year conversation whatsoever. But I, I have heard enough from our staffs and our principals to tell me that this matters right now and that a change right now would be very difficult for a lot of different reasons, scheduling reasons, but also just putting a burden on them that would be very challenging for our teachers.
Okay, excellent, excellent. And I do appreciate, um, the little math, um, small group from eleven to twelve on Mondays. I've learned a lot about.
And there's other, there are other things, the small group, there are other things that we do a lot with our special populations of students on Mondays that because the schedule's more fluid on Mondays than it would be on the other four days of the week, that allows us to do some of this. So there's a lot going on that parents may not see sort of on those days for teachers. Um, but to give some assurance to the question, is this the norm? This isn't going to be the norm. It's just we're in this moment where this is important.
Okay, good. Well, I just wanted y'all to explain that once again because it is true, the parent is just looking at their child and the work that their child is doing and not working, looking perhaps at the whole picture and what the teacher goes through and the small group instruction and all that.
And one final point would be Mondays also are available to us to bring in option two students to participate in SOL testing, the PSAT, AP, et cetera, which are scheduled in starting May.
Yeah, that's right. That's true. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Manning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two questions.
Um, so I asked this question a few weeks ago regarding what planning are we doing for the fall to get um, our students back to school five days in person? And the response was, "It's too early to make those plans." Um, I am getting a number of phone calls and emails from parents who really want to know for planning purposes what the fall is going to look like. Um, private schools are requiring responses from parents by the end of March. And parents are telling me that if we're not back in school five days in person, that they're going to go private and they want to know those answers now. Um, I, I, this might be a Ms. Lanetti question. I know that the state legislature passed a, a bill that is going to require in-person learning this fall. However, I have not been able to locate a final draft of that bill to know if that is full-time in-person learning or not. Um, so Ms. Lanetti or whoever, does anyone know the answer to that?
And speak to the bill briefly. So the bill, um, does talk about every school division offering in-person instruction for, for any enrolled student. But it also says none of that supersedes the regulations that are in place as a result of the CDC or the state VDH guidelines. Which goes back to what I said the last time the question was asked, which is I don't really have the crystal ball to say, "Will the three-feet restriction slash six feet where, where, uh, you know, where possible be in place or will it be gone?" Because that's what's dictating what we're able to do. We're really limited by the physical distancing requirement. That's, that's the key to whether or not all students come back five days a week. And so what we're, what we're doing to, to, to answer your question directly about when is I've asked Dr. Robertson to map backwards from the scheduling process to get to a date where we have to have some decisions. We've begun some scenario-based planning to say if it looks like this, then this is what we would do. If it looks like this, this is what we would do. And we'll bring those to you. And I think our plan is to bring those to you, Don, we talked about a date next month?
Yes.
Yeah, so to, to bring those scenarios to you next month for discussion about what the fall, um, would look like. I mean, our goal would be to have as many students back in person as is possible, understanding that we also will have to adhere to whatever restrictions are in place to accomplish that.
Okay, so the proper response to parents right now is?
We can't guarantee five-day in-person a week learning for the fall at this point, correct?
That, that's absolutely correct. I, I don't have that, um, I don't, I don't know what that guidance is going to be in the fall.
Question kind of piggybacks a little bit off of what Ms. Weems said regarding Mondays. I've had a lot of parents call me and, and email me regarding Mondays and their concerns that their kids are not learning, um, sometimes anything on Mondays. And while I know that that's not the case across the board, it is the case for some. And Mondays might be very effective for, for our teachers. And I have supported Mondays most of this year, um, especially for our teachers who are still teaching concurrently and I, and I still support it in those cases. But not all of our teachers are teaching concurrently. And Mondays are just not effective for our students. And, you know, our students, we've got to put our students first here. And we've got students who are struggling and, you know, especially our students with special needs. Are there any special, um, you know, spec- special exceptions being made for our students with special needs to be able, our middle and high school students with special needs to be able to come back more than two days a week?
Yeah, so, yes, Ms. Manning, at each school, the principals have given the authority in working with the, for example, the IEP team or the school, the student response team, uh, to identify those students who absolutely need additional days during the week. And if there is space for those students, if there's, if their parents want that and we can provide it to them, we are doing so in certain cases, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My Dr. Robertson, if I?
Ask for clarity perhaps one more time on going back to our option one students. So parent awareness aside, the fact remains, if they're healthy, they're expected to be in school.
Yes, ma'am.
So they can be home and the parent might be aware that they're home, but if they're not sick, it's still an issue?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
It, it'll, they'll be marked absent in that scenario and, you know, we, we have gotten a few questions, just as you all have had about that. But, you know, the other part of that, in addition to needing to notify parents who may not be aware, um, there's two other pieces that we've shared in terms of the concerns that we have with students who are option one who don't show up. One is, um, it, it, one is instructional, right? So when a teacher's planning for the in-person and concurrent instruction, they, they do actually, I mean, I was in a classroom today that, that had this going on. There were students who were doing something in a group appropriately distanced, and that was different than what was happening on Zoom. And so the teacher had to plan two separate things. And they planned for the students, they, you know, you know this, when teachers are planning for group instruction, they're identifying which kids they want together in those groups very often. Kids don't show up, that disrupts the instructional process. That, you, you anticipate some of that on a day-to-day basis as a teacher anyway. You know, usually you're going to have a kid absent. But if a lot of your students are choosing not to show up, that's problematic and it becomes disruptive to the instructional environment. So that's a reason that we want to make sure that those students are there. And then the other reason, which is obviously kind of this sense of fair play, we do have students on a waiting list. And they want their, their children to come back. And we've said, "No," because the number of students in that classroom prohibit that from a physical distancing perspective. But if we have students who aren't showing up, then those other students should not be prohibited from returning. But you can't predict that on a day-to-day basis because somebody's deciding on a whim to come in or not come in. Students need to show if they said they're going to be option one. If they don't want to be, they need to call the school, they need to let the school know that so that we can then open those seats for students who want to be there.
Thank you. I think that adds a lot of extra clarity. And, and certainly, again, for, they're, they're basically forfeiting their, their option. And, and as you say, there's others waiting in the wings. So I think it's more than fair to give the opportunity to reassess and to, to both, uh, affirm and enforce. Okay, Mrs. Anderson?
So I have one last clarification about, um, option one students who are sick. Because, and obviously if they're sick and they're not being quarantined, they might be sick on Monday, but they might show up on Tuesday. As long as they bring a note, they're excused
Yes.
from that. However, since they were sick on Monday, can they zoom in so that they're not missing in on that instruction?
Yes.
Is that, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Anybody else, colleagues? Well, th- this brings us very close to quitting time for the workshop. Any final comments or thoughts, Dr. Spence, on, on today's presentation?
Uh, no, ma'am. Just to, to reiterate, um, and I think Dr. Robertson and others on the team would say the same. We, we have been in our schools. I was in two schools today. And, um, it, it's, it's going really well. And so, um, one of the principals I spoke with today asked me to, they knew we had a meeting tonight and they asked me to pass along their appreciation for the opportunity to have children back in school with them. So, so thank you for that.
All right then, um, we will conclude this workshop at five twenty-five and we will resume with our formal meeting at six o'clock. This workshop is adjourned.